The board members still looking at is how we could grow and do things a little differently. And do them better, obviously, is what we want to do. Jim Fram sent me a note just saying that this is about attracting new jobs, new capital investment, a talented workforce, and to help Harrison become the wonderful destination community where people want to live, work, play, and enjoy families. So he also says it wasn't created in a vacuum or by one person. There's dozens of citizens that have been involved and have expressed their desire for us to move forward and make a better, more comprehensive program.
One of the things in the contract, it says that the Chamber will serve as the primary point of contact for economic development services, but that doesn't preclude the mayor or anyone else from going out and seeking, or if a company or business wants to come to Harrison, we don't have to direct them to the...
We, no, we don't have that authority. The one thing that is a benefit to going through the Chamber is the FOIA issue. So if they go to the mayor, there's that touchy part where, you know, he may have to let information out by law, where we can do things confidentially, but there's nothing excluding that.
Is there a particular industry or business that is being targeted with this? Like, is it more tourism? Is it more the established companies in town? Is it new factories? Or is it more retail? What is the focus or is there a focus to it?
I think the first thing that we want to do is the Business Retention and Expansion Program, which is, again, keep talking to our industries. We have several industries in town, and Eddie can speak to this, that would love to expand if we had the workforce. So we're working with workforce. We have an industrial alliance that we've created so that once a month, we come together as a group so that we can hear what their issues are. They've also been able to share resources for some training throughout all the different industries. That's the kind of the goal that we have. But also, one of Jim Fram's passions is entrepreneurship, so new small business. And then also, the downtown revitalization is something he's really passionate about and will help us work through. And one of the things, too, is coming up with that target industry list. So who is it that we should be targeting? And what are those businesses that we could target to come in that would provide services for somebody like Wabash or some of our industries that they're having to seek elsewhere? If we brought them here and then we create the jobs and make it easier and more profitable for our industries?
Could I address?
Please.
I was gonna say, Mr. Burke, but I hate to tear you on the spot.
Sure, no, I don't mind. I don't mind being put on the spot at all. Let me speak a little bit more detailed about this. When you ask people in general public in Harrison, Arkansas, they're gonna tell you that we need jobs, okay? I sit here and represent a facility that tries to employ 315, and we come 30 to 40 short of that on a regular basis, okay? The hospital is short on people. West Rock is short on people, and I could go on and on and on. Just pick a place in town, and they're gonna tell you their largest struggle is going to be workforce. We in Harrison, Arkansas, cannot grow our economy until we figure out how to grow our workforce. Now, Jim has come to the table. He is a 30-year veteran, started his time and effort here in Harrison, Arkansas, and went on to much bigger places than here. He brings to the table some great, great experience, and we're getting a bargain. We're getting a bargain. He charges 10 times this per month to do this in other areas. He has a passion for Harrison. We would like to continue to engage that. It's not, it's not just a certain segment. It's our economy as a whole. It would be tourism. It would be, it would be focusing on a workforce, and we're doing that. And then I go through some of the hours that we've invested in that. It is to focus on some retail. More importantly, and this is hashtag Believe Boone County's focused on this, we've got a reputation problem. We do. We can all sit in this room, stick our heads in the sand, and pretend it doesn't exist, but it exists, and it's getting worse. It's not getting better. Until we decide as a, as a town, as a county, as a community, to go out and tackle this, we will start dying instead of growing. And I'm from an east Arkansas town that stuck their head in the sand years ago, and it's in shambles today. And I bring to the table passion for Harrison, Arkansas. I've been here 20 years, and this is now my hometown. And if we don't start investing back into our communities, we won't be Harrison, Arkansas 20 years from now. We'll be something else. So it is very important that we, as a community, put our arms around this. We, as a community, come together. And if you're sitting on the sideline complaining, that's because you're sitting on the sideline and you're not part of the solution. You're part of the problem. So as you can tell, I'm a little bit passionate about this. I have put into this thousands of hours of my own family time to make this happen. This community put in over 1,400 hours last year. We're meeting on a regular basis. You want to know more? We can pile the documents on your table. This is a community-wide effort. I get tired of the comments that are placed on social media that nothing's happening. Nothing's happening is because you're not in the room. So come to the table, have a conversation, ask somebody, we'll be glad to share. And if you want to participate, there's a spot at the table for you.
Thank you, Burke.
So that's all, that's what I've got to say. Thank you.
Let me take a comment. That would be up to the mayor.
Yeah, we're in kind of a discussion here, so, yes, sir. Step right up.
Yes. I'm Martin Coats. I've built all the world. Most of you know that. I run a company with $360,000. And I agree with what the gentleman said. We do have a work shortage problem in Harrison, Arkansas. I know several HR managers that tell me they're short 30 to 50 every day. One of them is my neighbor, she's the HR manager, Clarice, and she's dying for people every day. The problem I have with this, I don't have a problem with the $15,000. I got the problem with how it's spent. I think the Chamber, if they really care about Harrison, and they have not brought a new job to Harrison since 1970-something, and I think they'll admit that, that the money should be going into a job training program that should be, the city should be putting money into along with the Chamber and all of us in the room. We have tons of talented people here that can train people in just about anything, but we need it in a job training program, not in a giveaway program, to backbait a contract, which I think is illegal for the Attorney General, and doing all that razzle-dazzle and running down and grabbing the court park, which Patty messed up on, and she finally admitted that, so I forgive her and I quit blasting on Facebook. I dug her down. But, you know, people, if you had a vote today with the voters of Harrison, Arkansas, voting the Chamber Commerce, you'd score about 15%. That's where you'd be. Go ask people outside with a little Chamber clique, where you all hold hands and have your little celebrations every month.
I'd like to rebuttal that. The Chamber represents over 400 businesses in town, okay? We represent probably 15,000 people in town in the workforce, okay? Now, in that table, there are plenty of leaders. I'm telling you, true leaders that have pulled up to the table. Mr. Coats has just said that he had no idea what's going on. Well, on page 23 of the strategic plan, we cover what he just talked about. Mr. Coats has not been at the table and has not participated, and I assume that has been his choice. But we, as a community, need to support this. The Chamber is in a role to help make this happen. This did not start out as a Chamber plan, but I'll ask anybody in the room, who is better prepared to lead this and get this started than the Chamber of Commerce? Long term, this does not need to be a Chamber plan. Hashtag Believe Boone County really needs to be owned by the citizens, okay? So we need to create a 501(c)(3), and at some point in time, I hate to say this in front of the camera, but at some point in time, we need to self-fund this so that we don't have to go out and ask for private donations. We're currently asking for $100,000 this year to do some pieces and parts of this. It's a three-year plan. We're gonna need $100,000 every year for the next three years. And guess what? We're over halfway there already in 2018. And we've got funding for 2019 and 2020 that's reoccurring. So our leaders in this community are behind this. We've not had anyone yet, huh? I say that because that's a big, that's a big word. We've gone to people, we've asked them for funding, we've not had anyone yet tell us no. They said, well, think about it. We'll come up with a number, and we'll, we'll help you. This is an opportunity for Harrison, Arkansas, and the council here to get behind this. Thank you.
I want to respond a little bit to that, too, because part of what Eddie's talking about is the college has gotten that million-dollar grant to do workforce. And I just want to say that that started in the Chamber. We brought the high schools, the college, and workforce development, all the entities together in the room and said, there's this grant out there that we found out through workforce development, that the mayor was there as well, and said, can we do this? Industry was there, because part of the process was that industry had to give dollars and equipment in order to get us to get that grant. And they did that. That started in the Chamber office. That started by the Chamber pulling people together. We may not have financial resources to do everything we'd like, but we do have the resources to bring people together, and I think that's our goal, is to spring people together.
One other thing, I'll talk about the Chamber. The Chamber of Commerce inherits a members-driven organization, but we don't just cover the members. If you cover the community and you do what's right by the community, you will help your members. And it is not, not adding jobs to Harrison, Arkansas is an incorrect statement. Harrison has been instrumental in many things that have gone on. I won't go into detail because under some of those circumstances, we are, we're under a confidentiality agreement.
One last thing. I've lived here two years. I've owned the Chamber Commerce, Orlando, Florida, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, Hong Kong. I have experience with the Chamber. I said once, I'd like to get involved in the Chamber, and I was told, you're too controversial. So why am I not there? I've been told I'm too controversial because I challenge people. By the way, how's Cora coming along that you put together?
I was a part of that, yes, and...
And it flunked in it. It flunked in it.
It did well as long as it's going.
Let's get off on, let's get off.
I think you need to find a new job.
Okay. Okay, Mary Jean.
Calm down, Bobby.
I'd like to know when the meetings are and if they are publicized.
They are, we send out emails to anybody that wants to come, but we need to know that you want to know because there are many meetings. And so we, what we've done is we have pillars, and so we've tried to target the specific thing you're interested in.
As a member of the Chamber, I have never received one of those emails.
Well, they've been in our Chamber meetings. Now, recently, we have been meeting as a small group to get the document created, but the pillar meetings are gonna, actually, there's gonna be one, I think, next week.
We can share that. We'll get that.
Yeah, we'll get that. Those meetings are gonna start up again.
They're not secret.
I mean, they do that by email. They're not...
But we didn't know...
I didn't get email.
We do, we just need to know which ones you want me to buy the two, because you could go to town and...
I mean, there are people that just don't have a computer, and maybe they would be interested, maybe.
Oh, we'll call them if they let us know. I mean, I think it's fair to say. Melissa's the chair, co-chair of hashtag Believe Boone County. Do you want to speak to that?
Just let us know.
The more the mayor...
Let Patty know, and she'll put you on the email list.
I want to get the contract back on the table. You know, I'm pro-Chamber. Of course, I can be pro-everything here in town, but I will say the Chamber and this office work very well together. A lot of, a lot of economic development has come through the mayor's office. I don't care who's sitting here, it's gonna come through the mayor's office, believe it or not. We need somebody that is professional at it, awesome. And I think they hopefully got the right person. But this contract does not name that those funds are going to an individual. It names what they are doing with the funds. And I want to, I want to make sure that that's out there. This contract states what they are doing with the funds only. And if you read through the contract, it's a good contract. The van's ready, and they've worked many hours on it, and I'm for giving them, at this time, an extra $10,000. And I will lay that on the table to the council.
What will the date on the contract be?
Okay, we're gonna bring it up next. We will probably start this contract July 1st, and it'll run through June of next year. So it will come up again at this time next year. That's, Luke, we all right with that?
So do we have to fund half of it now and half of it next year? Or can we fund all of it?
We can fund the contract through a one-year thing right now. We will not give them anything else until the contract comes up again next year.
And I have a problem with the amount because they received $6,000 to fund part of that economical development.
Believe it or not, they're trying to, they're trying to raise $100,000. That's what they're trying to raise.
Keep in mind, the $100,000 is for a different direction. The, the, what we have determined is one of the most difficult things for us to overcome has been reputation. So our problem extends much deeper than I'm sure anybody in this room understands. And we didn't understand it until we started digging into it. We went out and we have partnered with a firm out of Springfield to help us to create a brand. We're not doing this on our own by just blindly following whatever, but we've gone to Conway, and we've also gone to some other benchmark communities to understand how they have landed some very large employers and projects. And we've taken that, and we've partnered with a company out of Springfield to help us not only with branding Harrison, Arkansas, but with reputation management. And that's much deeper. As we talked earlier, as most people in this room know, we have a billboard go up, and it's awfully difficult to get it down, okay? So that's the challenge that we're dealing with, and it's important that we are very intentional with every step we make, whether it be on social media or in the paper or whatever that may be. So the majority in the bulk, the $100,000 is going toward that project. The economic development is above and beyond that. Now, hashtag Believe Boone County went out and is trying to raise $100,000. And the Chamber themselves, and the Board of Directors themselves graciously paid for the first six months of Jim Fram to be here, which is above and beyond, and actually outside the budget items for this year for the Chamber.
For him to be a consultant.
For him to be a consultant. So it's not, it's not the, I mean, we're, we're talking about two different pieces here that we're trying to accomplish.
May I make another comment? Your honor, please.
We're all being your...
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As a council member, and I have a specific responsibility, and Luke knows how I feel about this, in dealing with the finances with the city, and I'm gonna state again, in Wade Phillips, we've got a good, excellent bunch of people to work with the city, but Luke Ferguson, Wade Phillips, you could not get better young people to be engaged with your city government. There's no one at any price you could get to be better than Wade and Luke, okay? And I trust Luke very much. My responsibility here, I looked through this, and last year, this funding that we were using, we got a little bit loose with it. Now, when taxpayers call us, a lot of taxpayers are against any funding. I had somebody upset with me that we provide the police and fire department 66% of the budgeted revenues. They could not believe that and said, that's exorbitant. And I said, well, if you want a competent police force and fire department, that's what you have to spend. But when, when we asked tough questions of Ms. Matheson, and I've grilled her pretty difficultly on this in the last few days, it's because taxpayers are asking us, and we have a fiduciary responsibility to that as a council member. I am for this in principle. So when I intend to vote for this, but I have to catch that by saying, is it money well-spent, and are we gonna get a tangible benefit? As I pointed out to the mayor and multiple people that have called me, there's no one that wouldn't vote for this with a guarantee, 100% guarantee, that we're gonna develop money back into our community. But the general public still has issues with spending anything. Again, we have somebody that's upset that we're spending any amount of money on the police force, okay? So that's my soapbox. I intend to vote for this at the current time. I'm given, it's basically a leap of faith that this, and I believe in Mr. Fram and some individuals that have called me.
Okay, any other discussion? There being none, I will then hand a motion, like I said, for the mayor to sign his contract if it will come off the table.
So moved?
Second.
Motion and a second. I'd say this is any further discussion.
Bobby Woods.
Okay, Bobby, okay. Step right up here.
Well, I can make one quick comment. I won't be very long, but as I mentioned, I was here in the committee meetings. I've worked with the Chamber now. I'm in my third year being on the Chamber board. I did not realize what they do and what all was involved until I got involved with them. I am the treasurer this year. The Chamber itself operates on a very tight budget. There is no extra money in it. The other funds that have been mentioned are separate entities going some other way, and they're handled completely separate. The Chamber has received $5,000 a year from the city for economic development. That money is earmarked, and it is in restricted funds, and it is spent specifically on things that promote economic development. It is not, goes into the general budget, it doesn't go anywhere else. It's strictly for, it's earmarked, and we have an account for restricted funds. The county also gives us, was giving us $4,000 the last couple of years. They've reduced it to four. With five, it's now four, for the same thing. But I would just like to say that in...
Mr. Woods, are they giving, you said $4,000 this year?
Yes, the county has already, early in the year, given them the $4,000 before these other things come up, and we will be going to them in the next couple of months, asking for the larger amount on their next budget. But that's already been done. And the city has, the $5,000 a year has been since back in the 1980s, I believe, in this contract that we have just replaced with a new one, because we're here for about that many years as well. But the other thing...
There should be a handshake, I think.
It could have been for a long time, and then it did get put on paper for several years, but...
Well, one thing that was asked of me, I literally have multiple questions, some of them that I've shared with Ms. Matheson and some that I haven't. But now that you bring that up, if you want to continue that discussion rather than vote, I will ask you, we've been given $5,000 a year, and it was asked by taxpayer, what are the tangible results of that $5,000 a year?
Tangible results are hard to measure, but we have to keep going and keep investing in order to produce tangible results. We've not had someone like Jim Fram. We have a number of volunteers. Our 22 board members are volunteers, and everybody has good ideas, but it's kind of hard to corral those and go in the same direction. And that's what Jim Fram will be able to do for us.
Hey, Bobby, go pick a list of what we earmark as.
I don't have that list. Okay. Good. I lost my train of thought. I'm sorry. We have the opportunity with Jim Fram only because he's retired from his last position and to harden him, as we have done. But he can corral us and bring us, bring all these volunteers and head us in the right direction so we won't be going, trying to do it 42 or 3 different ways. That is a big plus to me, to see that happen and get us pointed in the right direction, everybody together. Funds are used strictly for economic development purposes. We can probably come up with some of those items if you want to know what we're talking about.
I'd like to. Can I speak to the tangible results? One thing that we've done in the last few years is worked with AEDC and West Rock and PACE and LaCheek in order for them to get tax back incentives. I bring those to you all the time. So we work through AEDC, then work through the Chamber. Somebody has to present that. We do that with the city and with the county, that one specific thing. And then I shared with you the last time, our Eastship University is a part of that. We've had businesses who started because of Eastship University, and they've had some incentives given to them by winning our business plan competitions. So there's quite a few of those that have been out. The other part of Eastship University is talking people out of starting business sometimes when they're not ready, because we want them to continue to be successful. We have a new ideas contest, things like that that are coming up. Our youth and adult leadership are part of the hashtag Believe Boone County in order to bring people or try to keep our youth here and bring some young professionals in. We also have HYPE, which is our young professional group that we've started. It's been a big part in trying to, again, connect them to the community so they can stay. So we feel like those are important things. I spoke to you about the million-dollar grant that the college got. That was, again, part of what we've done. We worked with the mayor and NMADD and BCEDC, lots of letters, sorry about that, with them all, and helped make that happen, the sale of them all. Matter of fact, we were in the meeting, and there was an entity that wasn't here, and I made that phone call, they showed up, and it made a big difference. So there's a lot of things that go on that I'm not sure anybody understands and gets that's economic development. Florida Day's balloon festival, that's economic development.
Mr. Mayor, I'll propose a vote.
I'm sorry.
We have no further discussion. This time, we have a second, we have a motion and a second on the table. All of them in favor of that motion, a high.
Aye.
All of the polls.
Aye.
Okay.
Record will reflect all yes votes with the exception of Mary Jean Creaker and Deana Taylor voting no.
Five to, five to, motion carries. Okay. And that contract will start the 1st of July and run through June of next year. Okay. All right. We'll move on here. I had spring cleanup reminder, but Pete, you want to say anything? Are you still here? Are you hiding back here? You want to say anything about the spring cleanup and how it's going?
So, Councilman, Mr. Mayor, we are in the fourth ward, fourth week of the cleanup. We know that there's some items out there that have been put out behind us. Next week, we're gonna compile the list and go back and inspect those, make sure that they weren't laid set out, so we'll be cleaning all of that up. Been successful so far. Picked up a lot of stuff. About 17 ton a week, I believe, is what we're getting. So far, so good.
I was amazed going down one of the city streets. I never saw so much furniture staying down there all my life.
I will have pictures. Pete, you're doing a good job. You're doing a good job.
Good deal. Mr. Mayor, in regard to that, I'd like to make a comment. I've received complaints from individuals in our ward, I haven't shared this with Mr. Oak, about some derelict vehicles on city streets. And they asked me if there was any way that we could have some sort of addition or if it's part of the clean premises ordinance, if a vehicle is left more than 30 days or whatever, that we can file a complaint.
You can on that now. We don't have code enforcement here tonight, but if it's licensed, and I think running, but they can park unless it's...
If it's not running, and it's there, let's say for six months...
Well, we can, we can probably address the situation, something like that, I guess. It may not be through clean premises, it may be through another avenue.
Special code.
In there, I'm surprised. It is in there.
We just need the complaint to know where it is.
Yes, yeah.
We've got the law.
Those complaints come into the mayor's office and we're gonna fill it out through our code enforcement.
The other complaint that I have received was in regard to noise, since we have the dog ordinance and barking. I've had complaints with loud music and disturbances within neighborhoods, and I told them that I don't know what the city ordinance is in regard to that, but I told them that we would look, check with you and the chief.
Chief can address that.
We currently don't have a city ordinance on that, but it does fall under disturbance of peace under the state statute, that we're going to enforce. If you call us and you have loud music in your neighbor, we're gonna go and give that personal warning the first time. If we have to go back the second time, that'll be up to the officer at that point if he goes and incites that person for disorderly conduct or disturbance of peace or the next step. But normally, the first time will all be a warning.
No, that complaint, that complaint comes through the police department. The clean premises comes through the, the public parks or the mayor's office. And believe it or not, this time of year, when the rain hits and the grass is growing, uh, we have several. I don't know how many yards we're actually mowing now, uh, cities actually mowing, but believe it or not, a few do the same, they do the same.
Hope it's not my place. The other noise complaint that I received, and this is from a citizen, it's against the city. And the city, he says, uh, on a daily basis, that the alarm that goes off at noon, uh, he sleeps during the day, uh, for the job. And he said, "It's not the dogs that bother him, it's the city alarm at noon."
And especially the day it was a minute and a half long.
Yeah. So I, I told him, I said, "I don't know what the, the policy is for testing the alarm every day." I have no idea.
Monday, Wednesday and Friday, there's no policy as such. There is no policy. It is a precautionary measure. If you never test them and you need them, uh, and they didn't work, uh, we'd be.
Well, this citizen doesn't mind him being tested. He doesn't mind him being tested every day, man. When he's sleeping.
I know who that is.
I asked him to do it up here.
But if the council, if the county, there's no actual policy.
Get him some earplugs.
But I know who that is now. The council wants to tell, tell us that we want to do it once a week or once a month or whatever.
If you don't test it, when you need it, it doesn't work, then you're gonna, I say test it.
I actually had that on the list here to bring up. It can lead me to that, so.
Sorry.
Yes, I have had a complaint on it. And I told him that's the first one like to, that I, to my knowledge, ever complained on a sirens. Believe it or not, when we called, when I called Ralph about it, we find the rules on it, he said, "Well, we've got people in the town that set their watch by those sirens. They call here and they'll go off." And I said, "Well, you know, it works both ways."
Well, he made the remark that it was, you know, right next door.
It is.
And, and did I know anything about that? And I said, "Yes," because, um, there's one up, uh, top of Rose Hill.
It's up to y'all if y'all want to get directions.
I'm gladly buy the earplugs or I'm gonna make for delivery.
Anyway, all right, it was brought to the table. Anybody else on the council having anything you want to bring up at this time?
Going on.
Before, well, I haven't got into my comments yet. I gotta head. Okay, um, next month on committee meetings, uh, Mr. Head and myself will not be at committee meetings. Hopefully we won't push too much on it.
Mr. Oswald was going to.
I don't, I don't think so, not to my knowledge. But we will be in Little Rock for three days at the municipal meeting. And I'm glad to have Mr. Head go and, uh, I can't tell him he's gonna learn a lot, but it'll be out. But, uh, if y'all are all right with that meeting.
We got.
Yeah, we got protein. Can I try not, I'll try not to put too much on there for you? Okay.
It's all right. Nina, you can table it, honey, if you need to.
I think I can handle it.
All right. Another reminder, with the city, the staff, not just me, has come up with, you know, we have a tax issue that's coming forward. Our, uh, we came up with a slogan, "Renew our future." Short, short, "Renew our future," that we're gonna be putting on, hopefully everybody will be putting on signs. And I will bring this also to the ta, to the table now that contracts are with, I didn't want to bring it up. But the chamber has come forward to the city and they, they are willing to buy some signs. The city cannot spend money, but they are willing to buy signs. The, uh, police department, uh, FOP is willing to buy signs. And I have not heard from the retired fire department, but I'm pretty sure they will be up too. So we're gonna, we're gonna, I think, like, I still have not heard, I know we can't on our Facebook page or, or our city website put vote for. We cannot do that, period. But can we have links to it is the question I, and I'm gonna ask, Van maybe look into this, can we even have links to it? Vote for links in there because we're going to set up a privately funded website also that you can go to and we'll have a vast amount of information on our website. But I wanna, if anybody's got a question about those taxes, contact Luke, myself, or Wade, or somebody within the city. We want the correct information out there is what we want. And, uh, I know we can't, like I say, we can't put vote for on anything other than what people outside the city buys, signs, they can put anything on there. But we like to keep them all uniform and, uh, maybe somebody might not like "Renew our future" as a, our slogan, but that's what we came up with. But Jeff, Jeff came up with the 2026 and he wants to make sure the 2026 is on every single sign. Everything you put out there, he wants 2026 on. Which, when I brought the theater. All right. Believe it or not, that's all I have to say.
How about the town hall meetings? You might want to mention those.
Okay, we're, uh, wait, I'm glad you brought that one.
You want to read by?
I've got one here. Okay, our next, next meeting that we're actually gonna have is not actually a town hall meeting, but it's an open meeting and that's a Green County four court meeting and that's on June 12th, 7th. It's not really a town hall meeting because we're making a presentation to the four courts. And I will say that we did make our presentation to the chamber. And I thought we'd get more questions out of you. Did we do a good job? We did a good job, boy, thank you, thank you.
We're, we're for it, we're for it.
Well, we have had, we've added a few little things in our presentation, but not long, not much. Okay, our actual town hall meeting starts on June 18th and that will be at the Eagle Heights Baptist Church at 6:00 p.m. June 21st, we'll be at Woodland Heights Baptist Church at 6:00 p.m. June 25th, we'll be at the First Presbyterian Church at 6:00 p.m. And July 10th, we'll be at the First Lutheran Church at 6:00 p.m. Also, the meeting, the committee meeting in July, we will make that presentation to an open house here in the chamber. So we will put that out also. We will have, we will do a presentation at committee meetings in July. So, uh, we'll put that out and we want to make sure the public is informed on where every single penny that the taxpayers paid to us goes. Okay, uh, we'll open up at this time to council. Nobody in council, I'll open up to the public then if anybody would like to say anything. I'll entertain a motion for a German.
Yes.
Have a motion.